Good evening, everybody. We're going to get the meeting going. It's 5:30. My name is Chris Pia. This is a special council meeting for the town of Stratford. I'm council chair. Today is May 11, 2022, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:30. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one and two and combine them for the purposes of discussion.
So, motion to combine items one and two for the purposes of discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. Any discussion? This is, again, just combining for discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine to zero. Back to the original motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
I would like to make an amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Poisson.
I move the amendment is amendment to the ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford, Connecticut for the fiscal year 7-1, 2022 through 6-30, 2023 to decrease the appropriation by $139,652. This change is recommended by council members Pia, Dancho, Connor, Poisson, Sutton, and O'Brien. The mill rate as the result of this change will remain at 39.46 for the 2021 grand list excluding motor vehicles and 32.46 per state statute for the 2021 motor vehicle grand list. The revised budget total will be $248,995,500. The line-by-line adjustments are as follows. For revenues, line 01100, 4012, property taxes. Revenue current taxes decrease $3,385,513. The revised line item total is $188,454,675,000. Line 01100, 4231, state of Connecticut. State education cost sharing, otherwise known as ECS, decreasing $1,127,377. Revised total $25,147,965. Line 01100, 4292, property taxes. Payments in lieu, local, increase $87,715. New total $438,571. Line 01100, 4297, state of Connecticut. Motor vehicle property tax transition, increase $2,986,411. New total $2,986,411. Line 01100, 4701, other revenues. Gain on sale of land increase $200,000. New total $450,000. Line 01100, 5088, debt service fund. Premium on bond sale increase $900,000. New total $35,609,812. Line 01107, 4306, town clerk. Conveyance tax increase $199,102. New total $1,049,102. The total decrease, as stated previously, is $139,662, and the revised line item total Under expenditures, line 01102, 6033, office of the mayor. Payroll regular increase $12,945. New total $318,700. Line 01107, 6003, town clerk. Payroll regular increase $59,377. The new total is, excuse me, the increase is $59,000. The new total $377,103. Line 01107, 6004, town clerk. Payroll part-time decrease $28,000. Revised line item total is zero. Line 01151, 6682, contingency. Preventative maintenance decrease $175,696. New total $199,304. Line 01201, 6921, debt retirement. Bond interest increase $115,000. New total $6,655,202. Line 01251, 6053, employee benefits. Health insurance decrease $100,000. New total $13,319,193. Line 01306, 6003, IT department. Payroll regular decrease $16,411. New total $299,316. Line 01352, 6599, health department. Miscellaneous decrease $6,500. New total zero. Total expenditure change is a decrease of $139,662, and the new expenditure total is $21,168,818.
Motion has been made by Councilor Poisson to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. Discussion, so discussion will be solely to the amendment made by Mr. Poisson. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on the amendment? Mr. Can.
Just some background, please. Let's relate possibly property taxes, the reduction of 3.3, and the Connecticut state motor vehicle positive of 2.9. They may be, let me call it reconciling items.
Do you want me to take that one first with Dawn and Chris?
Good.
Not to confuse him. Chris, because he has some clarity on this.
That's pretty much exactly what it is. We spent Monday and Tuesday trying to figure out how other towns were going to reconcile the motor vehicle mill rate reduction for all Stratford residents, which will end up saving $100, you know, if your car is assessed at like $15,000 per resident. So, that's the way we had to book it. There was also a shortfall in the amount the state was giving us to the tune of $400,000, which we had to make up because the amount the state's giving us to offset the actual grand list value of our cars was $400,000 short. It was actually $399,100-something dollars short. So, we made those numbers fit in the budget so there would be no harm to the taxpayer.
Chris, did they explain why they were $400,000 short?
In several different scenarios, we got throughout the entire process, the whole legislative process. Originally, it was supposed to be a car rate, statewide car rate tax of 29 mills. They had to increase the value to 32.46 because when the state originally did their projections, they did not use this year's grand list. This year's grand list, the values of all the cars went up because the values of used cars have increased. So, the state increased the amount to 32.46 because their total bucket of money wasn't enough to cover what the governor originally proposed. That left several towns short. We think there's probably 77 towns which are going to be able, well, we think there's probably about 70 towns which are in this scenario where they're going to be collecting the money. Each town has to do their own equation based upon the grand list, which was submitted January 31st. When we submit that grand list versus the 32.46 number, it shows a $400,000 deficit. We have let OPM know in email correspondence today that there is a deficit. We've also let CCM know, and we're not the only town which is facing this.
And through the chair.
Go ahead.
Question that we have asked before is, in regards to the increase of the grand list and the increase in property tax revenue that we've included in the budget, how much of that was due to the increased value of cars, of motor vehicles between now and last year? Between the last grand list and the current grand list?
Maybe, maybe Dawn has that percentage. It went up.
Going back to the pie chart that we talked about.
Yeah, it went up, it went up quite significantly. Dawn, do you remember that?
I can't give you a solid number on that. It did go up, it did go up significantly, upwards of 15% for the total value of our vehicles.
And this reduction for the residents represents what percent decrease?
So, last year, the mill rate was 39.47, and you paid your car tax based upon a 39.47 mill rate. This year, the ordinance which you're going to pass tonight is going to send the bills out, the car tax bills, at a mill rate of 32.46, which will be a, almost a .7-mill reduction, which we did a scenario today based upon a car valued at $15,000. It would be $100 savings this year.
Okay. Second question?
Pertaining to the amendments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Bond service fund. We got a premium of 900, and then the bond interest is also going up by 115,000. Why, does this represent new borrowing or refinancing?
Well, this is the bond premium of which we went out to sale last, last week. We closed the bond deal last week. Ordinarily, we do it in November. We did it this year. It was advised to put it off. We did put it off. We had our rating calls. I'm sure you read all about the, the good news in the newspaper about our ratings being confirmed. That was part of the bond sale process. We, we did very well, we thought, compared to market rate. And with that came a $900,000 bond premium, which we put into this year's budget, and it also increases our bond, the amount we have to pay back for next year's bond interest. Now, this would have been something which would have been put in the mayor's original proposed if we went out to bond at the beginning of December like we have in years past.
And what are we bonding for? Is this for capital, or is this?
This was for the projects which were approved last year. We did a total of $15.6 million worth of projects. Is that number right, Dawn?
Any other questions, Greg?
Yeah, they were all approved projects. Nothing was not approved. This, in that bond project, you know, included our bands as well. So, these are all capital projects which have been approved by the council. They get queued up for funding. The notes are out, and.
And one last question.
Go ahead.
Down to IT, you know, I think of that as a, well, how do you say, you know, guarantee the efficiency and the levels of customer service, you know, the uptime of our computers, an updated website, the new softwares that we're buying, for example, for the tax collector's office. Why are we able to reduce salaries?
So, during the budget workshop, it was identified that there were two salaries which weren't, didn't link right in the, in the mayor's proposed budget. So, this amendment corrects that for the IT department, and that's what that is. It's not, it's not a reduction of salary. This is the situation where the employee has a split salary amongst other different departments. One, one of the departments didn't get fully tagged to that, to that department. So, it was a correct, it was a correction.
And a final question, please.
Last one. Go ahead.
State educational cost sharing. I know that's been quite a dynamic with the alliance funds and whatnot. Can you synthesize the debits and credits there to?
Yes, absolutely. So, when the state passed their budget last week, they included Stratford in the alliance program, as we talked about during three, three of our budget workshop meetings. In that, it includes a direct line payment to the Board of Education of $1.127,377 million. So, that's $1.1 million, which was included on the town side in the ECS revenue. We have to reduce the revenue by that amount, and now the state of Connecticut is, has opened a direct pay line to our Board of Education to directly fund the Board of Education to that amount, or whatever amount the legislature deems moving forward for the next five years in any sort of ECS increase. So, moving forward on the Board of Education's budget, they will have a direct revenue line from the state, they should have a direct revenue line from the state for whatever ECS number is increased above last year's ECS number to the town.
From a Board of Ed perspective, ECS plus alliance versus the proposed budget, are they getting any more money than is reflected in this budget page?
So, they are getting more money based upon what I've heard from other outside groups. I believe Rosa Delora's office announced that they were going to be sending an additional hundred-something thousand dollars in Title, Title I, Title I money, is it? And I anticipate throughout the course of the year, more money will come in, the same way it came in last year, for special education grants as we go ahead and we apply what our actual expenses are. I also, I, I've said it, I've said it, every budget workshop, I think I said it, the state's sitting on a lot of money, and I anticipate them rolling out more grants and redoing formulas throughout the course of this year as they try to spend down this money. So, I, I think there's a lot of stuff they talked about in session, which is still on the table, which most likely will, will come, you know, and I hope it comes to Stratford and all the towns because the state is sitting on a lot of taxpayer money right now, which could be doing more use in the hands of the municipalities.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other councils have discussion on this amendment alone?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Poisson or whoever would like to answer. Under expenditures for the mayor, the increase of $12,945. Could you just give?
Mr. Timmyak.
I'm sorry, Mr. Timmyak.
That was also done in the budget workshop. It was the same, it was the same thing. Because the mayor's salary was set by the town council, it didn't get connected in the munis system, which is what the printout was for the proposed budget. So, that increase accurately reflects what the council voted on for the mayor's salary prior to last year's election day.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, we'll call, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Is there any opposed? 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 Two opposed?
Three opposed.
Three opposed. If you're opposed, please raise your hand. I have, I have three opposed. Okay. Motion passes, sorry, seven to three. Thank you. Okay. No problem. So, go ahead, Mr. Can. You have the floor.
Thank you. I have these written down if someone would like a copy. The first one is related to the finance purchasing department. It would be a reduction of $24,375,000 in the part-time salary. I can read the organization and object numbers off if you like.
If I, Mr. Chairman, he just said $24,375,000.
Oh, dollars. I apologize. Misspoke. $24,375.
In what line item, Greg? Just for the record, just for the amendment to be clear.
It's on page 27. It is item 01303.
Just state the.
No, but we can hand those around. Thank you, Margot. Apologies for not making enough copies.
So, we're going to wait.
Okay.
No action.
I'm going to get a water. Ken, water?
Good, Margot? All right, let's go. Greg, go ahead. So, I need, I need a clear motion with the page, the name, the object number, and the amount, please.
Okay. Page 27. Object name is finance purchasing. Part-time salaries. Organization object 01303/6004, and the amount of $24,375.
That's your motion? Or do you want to combine all of them? You can put them all together.
I'd rather them be.
You want to do them all individually?
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Shake. Discussion on this. Go ahead, Greg.
The administration has sometimes spoken about the ability to float administrative staff to meet needs as they arise, and I'm making a presumption here that in the purchasing department, if they do need resources to catch up on deadlines or peak demand, that those resources exist and can be shared with other departments.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, six, four to six. You have another amendment, Greg?
Yes.
Can you, yep. Page 29, tax collector. Motion has been made to amend by Mr. Can. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Ms. Rice. Discussion? Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chris. Recognizing that the tax collector's salaries have increased by about 30% over the last five years, and we're looking for another bump this year, there is a note about outside services used for processing of tax statements, if you will, but also there's a note about software that was purchased that will increase efficiency and accuracy. So, through the use of software, if we're going to increase efficiency, there should be a corresponding savings. The intent of this amendment is to recognize the efficiencies and improved quality of services and to right-size the salaries for this department.
Any other point of clarity? Madam Mayor, just, Mr. Leclair, Madam Mayor just pointed out it's the incorrect object code as listed on Mr. Can's amendment. I just want to get clarification so we have it correct for the record.
Let me correct that, and I appreciate the mayor's diligence. It's 01305.
Thank you. So, for the record, okay. Any other discussion on the item?
Laura Dancho.
Ms. Dancho.
I'd like to point out that the amount is already reduced from last fiscal year.
Okay. Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call.
Well.
Any other discussion on that item?
Only that the amount has gone from 38 to 63 to 87 to 120. I don't know what the actual cost is for this year, and the budget amount is reduced by 115, suggesting that there's plenty of room to right-size this expense item.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, four to six. Go ahead, Mr. Can.
Item three, page 31, health department.
Motion's been made by Mr. Can. Sorry. Do I have a second to the motion? Ms. Shake. Discussion. Go ahead, Greg.
The blight officer can often be an invaluable position to families that are in strife and need assistance to remediate their properties. But we now have four departments that are involved in the investigation and process of remediating blight. Given the fact that the town is in a deficit operating position requiring $5.7 million of federal monies to balance its budget, we should be considering short-term areas where we can alleviate financial stresses and become, obtain more local control over how we utilize the taxpayers' resources.
Any other discussion?
I'll add in. I think that's absolutely ludicrous to do away with the blight officer. Here's why. The blight officer is a revenue-generating position for the town. Number two, the blight officer, and I'm not speaking to the individual, I'm speaking to the position, the blight officer helps a lot of people in this town. Doesn't matter if it's Democrat, Republican, it has nothing to do with party, has nothing to do with anything. It's a very invaluable position that, quite frankly, over the years, people on both sides they all have admired, and I do too. I think it's invaluable to the town, the position. I don't care who's in it, as long as they're doing the job effectively and professionally, and that's how I'm going to leave it at that. Any other discussion?
One last point.
Go ahead, Greg.
Recognizing that other municipalities have found the means to conduct the blight role within their legal, their police department and their health departments, again, knowing that many people do benefit, but if we call it best practices, do we need a separate position for what other towns have demonstrated they can do within existing resources?
Any other discussion?
I'll make one comment.
Mr. Connor.
You know, Greg, you always compare other towns. Let me tell you a story. Culture will eat strategies lunch every day of the week. Every town operates in a different culture. There's no, I hear the registrar voters is this, and I hear this in the blight officer. It's all apples and oranges. You have individual managers that are managing all these, these towns and cities. So, to refer to something that happens in Harwinton, Connecticut, has nothing to do with us. So, I don't see it. The other thing is, is it revenue-neutral? You're, you're making a, a decision to drop something, a service, to pass it on to someone else. You really, what you're doing is getting into the group of managing. Really what you're doing is getting into the group of managing the town. The manager of the town is the mayor's administration, not ours. We're here for the budget. We can give advice, but ultimately, the mayor and administration. So, that's all I'll say about that. But that goes in general. I hear that all the time. Register our voters can be done half-time. They forget to tell you that they bury money in the thing, and they don't, on the primaries, they bury it in the general election. There's a lot of things that go on because... But everybody's more smarter when they come on new and they know what's going on. It doesn't work that way.
Before there's any other discussion, just clerical. Again, correction on the org, Mr. Leclair, Mr. Ken. The mayor, double-check this one. The one you have, the number is incorrect again. The number should be 01352 for the Health Department salary blight. I just wanted to read that into the record, unless there's any objection.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other discussion on this item? Turn on your mic.
Mr. Ken, then if you're suggesting that we...
You're going through the chair.
Oh, go through the chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Ann.
Mr. Ken, you're suggesting that we reduce the blight officer and save his salary. Are we gonna be adding that back into the Health Department, PD, and legal because they're gonna be taking on those added expenditures? Makes zero sense with the value of the position.
Go ahead, Greg.
I think we can learn. I think we can learn from the best practices of other municipalities. I recognize that our culture is not the same as others, but if an inventory of 180 towns showed that only a dozen have a separately-funded blight officer, that may give us an opportunity to learn. This is just looking at places where existing resources with marginal increase in effort, legal, legal health and police department already go to these blight sites. So, we're, in a sense, having four people manage each blight incident. So, I think we can learn from other municipalities. This is just a suggestion, recognizing the dire straits of the town's finances.
So, Mr. Ken, to Ms. Sutton's question, are you gonna increase the Health Department?
Administrative... No, we're reducing the Health Department by removing this position for this year.
Okay.
The existing Health Department resources, which already go out to the blight sites, will continue to perform their function with a marginal increase in administrative overhead that can be absorbed.
Thank you.
So...
Hold on.
Through the chair.
Mr. Connor.
So, I'd like to say, what you're suggesting is revenue-neutral, again. There's no benefit to the mill rate, it's just that you don't particularly like the way it's being managed. So, I'm going back to what I said. That is the mayor's administration. It's not for us. If you're gonna leave the money in there, but just, whether you don't like the person or you don't like anything else, it's revenue-neutral.
Hold on, let him finish. Greg, let him finish.
Whatever's motivating you is revenue-neutral.
And he...
True.
Greg, if you want to respond, then we're gonna move on. But go ahead, I'll let you respond, if you want to.
Yes.
Go ahead.
The group of these amendments, in their entirety, are revenue-neutral. You'll see that the intention is to make the Board of Ed whole. If the Board of... So, advice, Mr. Connor said, we're entitled to give advice without interfering in the mayor's role as the chief administrative officer. This is advice, learning how other towns function, trying to integrate those best practices. It's disingenuous to speak about individuals versus simply where can we do better, given the dire straits of our operating income.
All right. Any other discussion, or I'm gonna call for a vote. I'm gonna call for a vote on that amendment, that motion to amend, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Opposed. Motion fails, four to six. Go ahead, Mr. Ken.
We have one more? Oh, my God.
Page 5, 16, the account is...
Can you turn your mic on, Greg?
I'm flipping back to page 16 to get the correct... It's not page 16.
0106. 01106, the mayor.
011...
That's your fourth amendment, not the fifth amendment.
What typos. Thank you, guys.
So, if you could, Greg, if you could just...
This is amendment item four, page 16, register voter 011066003, salary item reducing by $60,000.
Motion has been made to amend by Mr. Ken. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Shake. Any discussion? Greg, go ahead.
Learning from other municipalities, the substantial part of their election expenses is focused around elections themselves, preparing the machines, hiring, training, quality control, et cetera. Having three full-time individuals working 12 months a year in the ROV office, when most registrations are occurring online and not in person, seems to be... It's not a practice done by other municipalities. Again, we can learn. If we need more money for elections, we put the money in elections like other municipalities do. But is it the best practice to fund three full-time positions 12 months a year? That's the intent of the amendment.
Is there any discussion on this? So, I'll just add a little clarity. So, we talked about this extensively in Budget Workshop, as we've done pretty much every year. It was brought up by the registrar, the Democratic registrar. There was no plan proposed with no verifiable facts, and I will, I'm just gonna say it on the record, three out of your last four are targeting individuals for political purposes, and I don't appreciate that. I'll tell you right now.
Through the chair, emphatically false, your personal animosities towards trying to improve... We're not always gonna get 4.7 million from the state. We're not always gonna get a gift of 5.7 million from the feds. At some point, we need a commercial development...
Yeah, that's irrelevant, Greg, but keep going.
...that we'll pay. So, if, Chris, you want to protect individuals' salaries, that's your prerogative. I'm looking at the effectiveness of the positions and the values they return to the town, looking at other municipalities in Connecticut, across the country, and if they don't have a need, if no one else has a need for three full-time positions, it's not that I'm speaking against any one of those three individuals, it's simply that there's an alternate and likely better way of managing that department.
You and I respectfully disagree.
Mr...
Anybody else?
I'd like to go through the chair. So, this has been an ongoing discussion for a number of years, it's not the first time. Some facts, we did remove one whole person in last fiscal year. Nobody ever seems to talk about that. They run on trying to get elected that were overstaffed and they're incompetent. Now, let me ask you something. What is singularly the biggest issue in the country right now? Is fraud from voters. It's on both sides. If you go back to 16, the Democrats whined for four years that Trump won it electorally. If you listen to the Republicans now since '20, they whine because there's problems with the voting. So, how can you suggest the one place we have to protect freedom, you want to reduce on $60,000? You're talking about balancing the budget on giving money to the Board of Ed? It's not gonna matter. It's relevant. You said to yourself, all your amendments were revenue-neutral. So, if they're revenue-neutral, the Board of Ed's not gonna get any more out of that. That's why Mr. Pia thinks this is personal, because it can't be seen as anything else if it's revenue-neutral. So...
Hold on, let him finish, Greg, and then I'll give you the opportunity. You good, Mr. Connor? Go ahead, Greg.
Well, I just wanted to find... So, you know, we're talking about some serious stuff here, when you're talking about democracy and freedom, and you're going down a road... And I'll make one more point. You go 169 people, you keep saying like, everybody does it different. They all do it different, they don't do it better. Some have the working families. Some have two people part-time, some have two people full-time, and two people part-time. So, if you're thinking that you're actually at the bottom of the time, you're gonna have a better dollars, I don't see that. And the other thing is, something I've learned here, we got primaries coming up, big ones. Other towns, you know what they do? They throw them into general budget, give it to the mayor. Let her figure it out, okay? Let her come up with it. We don't do that. It's more transparent. But you're just making general statements that everybody does it better, and I'm telling you, they don't. I already went through this exercise. But if that's, you know, the misleading you want to say, because it's good for Facebook or whatever, and gets you going, then fine, that's okay. But it's wrong.
Go ahead, Greg. I'll let you respond.
So, what's right for Stratford is to be the only municipality of its size, 50,000 residents, 20,000 voters, to have three full-time positions. And I don't know that those three full-time positions, working all those days, is going to improve the quality of the election or remove... But in any case, it's based on comparative analysis, it's based on best practice. Whenever you introduce a change or provide advice, it's typical you're gonna get resistance. If the resistance wants to be framed as a personal attack on individuals that are in those positions, that's unfortunate. This is agnostic, based on the roles and based on where money can be more effectively utilized.
Any other discussion on this amendment?
Yes, please, through the chair.
Ms. Sutton.
Mr. Ken, have you ever performed any of these jobs or positions in your past?
Go ahead, Greg.
Have you ever been a registrar of voters? Have you ever worked in that office?
I'll look at the tasks. The registrar of voters...
No, that was just a simple...
Yes.
You have? Because if you have not...
Explanation. Explanation is, if you look at the tasks that are exercised by this office, whether it's mandated by the Secretary of State or it's just common-sense practice, they're 99%, to generalize, clerical in nature and standard work process...
I'm gonna ask my question one more time.
Yes, I answered yes, and I'll answer yes again. Doing standard work, repetitive work, clerical work, I've been doing for 70...
Greg, on your resume, did it say anything in regards to registrar of voters? And I'll leave it at this point, because if it does not, then I don't believe that you have the competence to be making suggestions about cutting such a small fraction when we have our democracy on the line. And that's the end of that. Through the chair.
Hold on. Yep. Any other discussion? Ms. Shake, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just bringing everybody back, I think everyone who, I would hope, every single person who's serving in this collective body or in any other elected position in our town, does respect democracy and the process of clean and fair elections, number one. Number two, I support Counselor Ken's efforts in supplying not only this amendment, but the other amendments here, because we are providing, we are offering advice as to how to move efficiencies into our Board of Education.
Caitlin, we gotta keep the conversation to this amendment only.
I'm just making a general...
Please, just keep it to this amendment only.
So, I would hope that, you know, the mayor, this body does not have to approve it. We will vote, and then the mayor can take it for at-will.
Any other discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Chairman, just one of the minor correction. Voters is spelled wrong, just add an S instead of an A.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any other discussion? We're gonna call this for a vote. All this, all those in favor of this amendment, please vote aye. Those opposed?
No.
No. Amendment fails, motion to amend fails, four to six. Mr. Ken?
I have two more. I have number five. This is on page 67, I have seven more. I do not have organization of elected numbers as an appliance to order a dozen departments in town. This amendment allows the...
I need an actual amendment, not a description of it. So, if you don't have numbers, then why are we entertaining this?
Why are we entertaining? The numbers are not in the back of the book, so I would have to go to each department and look at the salary.
So, Greg, hold on one second, Greg. Town Attorney Leclair.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think you're correct. You know, this evening, you are both appropriating money and approving a budget for the town of Stratford, and that budget is comprised of individual line items. So, if you're gonna make amendments to the budget, you must address specific line items rather than generalities such as many different object codes on many different pages in a total amount. That would not be an appropriate motion.
So, no motion has been made at the time. Are there any other motions?
Yes.
State your motion, please.
I will have the individual departments with the individual numbers.
Please put your mic on.
I will go to individual departments with the individual numbers and propose individual adjustments.
Greg, you could've prepared this ahead of time. We had ours prepared ahead of time, so you could've done this. You're expecting me to wait now for each of these?
Well...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Greg?
Item number one, Office of Mayor, 011026003.
Okay, motion to am...
Minus...
Sorry.
$40,000.
Minus 40. Motion has been made by Mr. Ken to amend. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Shake, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
No. Motion fails, four to six. Do you have another amendment?
Item zero, this is how, Human Resources, page 13, 011036003. That's the salary item, minus $15,000.
Motion's been made by Mr. Ken. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Shake. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, four to six. Do you have another amendment, Mr. Ken?
Page 14, 011046003, payroll, Town Attorney, minus five.
Motion's been made by Mr. Ken. Do I have a second?
Five thousand.
Point of clarity, 5,000. Thank you. Motion has been made by Mr. Ken to amend. Do I have a second? Ms. Rice, any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, four to six. Do you have another amendment?
Page 15, Chief Administrative Officer, 011056003, salaries, minus... Minus 18.
Motion's been made by Mr. Ken to amend. Do I have a second?
18,000, for the record.
18,000, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Ms. Shake is on the second. Do I have a discussion? Go ahead, Greg.
Just as a point of clarification, the numbers that I'm reading out in regards to decreased salaries is to offset the proposed increase in salaries that are in this year's budget. Now, I do recognize that a number, if not all, of these at-will employees have not received a salary increase in a number of years. They do deserve fair and equitable compensation, but to the point that the town is in a state of welfare economics, where we're relying on $5 million from the state for the current year, we're relying on $6 million from the federal government, is this the right time to increase salaries with...
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Connor.
Through the chair. I'd like to address the general here. We're in a point, I spent 30 years in HR, we are in the worst hiring situation that I've ever seen in 30 years, and nobody I know has seen it this much. People that are 23 years old are starting at $30 an hour. Everybody's jumping. If we do not maintain competitive capability with the people here, they'll leave, because there's plenty of people leaving. So, you're not only voting to give the money of, I think it's 300,000, I think is the total number, I heard from someone, you're talking about stability. The last thing we need is people moving now, just because they were given a raise, it was in the budget, and then we've decided not to give it to them from a morale standpoint. So, I'm surely gonna vote against it.
Any other discussion on this amendment only?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Just in response to what Mr. Connor said, you know, the effort to try and reduce this year's mayoral appointees' salary increases is an effort from this side. this year's mayoral appointees' salary increases is an effort from this side of the aisle to reflect what is also happening in the Board of Ed's budget. Now, they have this very similar, right, challenge of not being able to hire all of those vacant positions. So in the meantime, they still have to function and maintain their staff. So again, off of the comments that were directed earlier, this is not personal. This is not about how good of a job one department or person is doing. This is about trying to find a better way to fund priorities. And perhaps maybe next year, hopefully, we'll be in a better financial position. And that's it.
Any other discussion on this amendment?
Just one more. Ms. Shay, she makes a point. But the point that they're not being able to find teachers, those are union jobs and a shortage of teachers. That's not, it's apples and oranges. You have people that are non-unionized, that are being asked to punish and take the brunt of it, versus the unions have a contract, they're going to guarantee it. And I'm not against unions, and I'm not against this, but we've been a couple of years since these folks have gotten anything, and the dynamic has changed. Even Mr. Khan, even Mr. Khan said that. It's been a couple of years. So, you know, it isn't personal. I just think that the folks that were provided should get it, based on what I said. You have a shortage of people now, people are moving around, the salaries are to whack. No business knows how to plan for the future. So we need to make sure we keep stability here.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Chair votes no. Motion fails, four to six.
One more item, Chris.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. Given the accumulated salaries for the...
I need you to make a motion.
Well...
That's not a...
The motion then is on page 58. I'm going to, I'm going to turn this into a comment with your forgiveness.
I, no, Greg, make a motion to amend, like we've been doing. I'm giving you the opportunity.
Motion to amend, page 58, BOE 015516802. Increase the funding of BOE by 323,000 dollars.
Motion to amend by Mr. Khan, as stated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Shay. Now we have discussion, if somebody would like to discuss the motion. Anybody like to discuss this one?
Through to Chair.
Mr. Connor.
Okay. Couple things. When I saw Pam, I don't remember her last name, talk, a couple things I picked up, that, the first thing is, she stated that the Board of Ed, which came in four years in a row with excess money after the mayor and the council had cut it. She says that's in a 2% variance. So what I take of that is, if it's 2% okay to come in also, it's 2% to come in under. That doesn't give you the right to talk about laying off teachers, and closing buildings, and closing schools. I said that, that to me was an idle threat, because you're, we're in the window. The second, second thing is, goes back to the labor-wide shortage. She said this. They have open teachers, they're filling with temps. That means they're not paying benefits, or they're not paying salaries. So I don't think they really know, as, in fairness to them, as any industrial place doesn't know, or any municipal can get a handle on this. So again, to just arbitrarily get everybody stirred up, and I don't know that anybody truly believed it, and if they do believe it, then it's not going to happen. There's not going to be layoffs, there's not going to be teachers. And one thing else, someone posted on Facebook that it's our responsibility to make sure, and the problems are to last eight years. The problems are not in the Board of Ed because of the council. It is not. We are prohibited by law and state to get involved with that. If that was the case, and we could, there would be a different answer. But that implies something. Again, putting out misinformation that people can control. They didn't work with us and came to this, and they dug their heels in, and this is what they wanted. And I warned people, I said, it's going to come down to votes, and the votes are very solid. There's a senior place here, we've had four or five consecutive budgets that are under. There's no need to throw in more money, a 2.1 million. Now I'm hearing it's down to 600,000. So we've gone in the last two weeks from $2 million shortage to $600,000 shortage. That to me is not a shortage in a 130, $30 million budget. That's just part of the game. So enough said for me.
So just on clear, this, hold on. So everyone's clear, this discussion's limited to this amendment, which is the Board of Ed. So any other discussion? Ms. Shay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in an effort to allocate more funding to the Board of Ed budget of 323,000 dollars, I believe that's what Mr. Khan had offered as his amendment. Mr. Connor, thank you for bringing up the point that, you know, when you have organizations or bodies that are putting together their budgets, and the actual comes between 1 or 2%, that that is actually a good thing. Because we have heard in past discussions, that because the Board of Ed has had a surplus at the end of their year, that that is a negative thing. And it is not a negative thing, because it means that they were within that 1 to 2%, which is ideal. So how we're talking about how the Board of Ed is managing their financial responsibilities, obligations, to all of the staff that they employ, and help run our town, I would just thank you for making that point.
Any other discussion on the Board of Ed amendment?
One thing, I just want to give Tammy, Pam, she gave me the point, I just reiterated it.
Any other discussion on this?
I just wanted to say something about the Board of Ed and the proposed amendment. The 323,937 dollars does not have an offset, so that would result in a mill rate increase. And part of our responsibility is to not overtax our residents. So that's what I wanted to point out with this. And unless I see an offset, 323,937 is, is not, is not a revenue-neutral change.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shay.
So in the previous amendments that Counselor Khan had offered, I believe, if we have someone who can add everything up, that with the reductions of salaries of appointees, not our union positions that work here in this town, that that would then provide the 323,000 dollars then go and be allocated to the Board of Ed.
Through the chair.
And my follow-up question would be, would you be able to share with us how much of an increase specifically that would be for taxpayers?
So, all right, so Ms. Dantrell, if you'd like to respond, and then we're going to see who else wants to talk. No. Did you have anything, Ms. Dantrell, or no?
I, I just wanted, through the chair, point out to Counselor Shay that I can do the math, and I see that the previous amendments added up to the same amount of money, and those amendments were just voted down. So that, that, those amendments don't exist. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this one? All right, seeing none, we're calling, vote for an amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, four to six. Back to the original, excuse me, back to the original motion, as amended by Counselor Poissons. Any further discussion? And if there's no other amendments, just out of courtesy, are there any other amendments forthcoming? Because if not, what I'd like to do is, like we've done in the years past, give each counselor up to a couple of minutes to say their, say what they like, and then we're going to vote on it. Okay? So, and this will be the last discussion, because we voted to combine items for discussion. So Ms. Shay, we've given you the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I love going first. I love being the second district, and I just get defaulted.
If I was over there, I'd be going first.
Absolutely. I'm just saying. I'll start with the positive. This budget season is the first budget season, this is my third time doing this, with mostly everyone that's here. And this is the first time that we've actually had, you know, the opportunity to have budget workshops where we have asked questions and had some answers given to us. And this is the first budget season where we have arrived at this juncture, where all of the amendments that you have provided, you, you are reading into the record to offer, are being shared with us. And this is the first time that we're sitting down to review them. So I hope that next year, when we do this, you know, the amendments that are offered from both sides of the aisle, that we have better communication amongst both of us, so that we don't have to sit here and waste as much time for the obvious outcome. I think, yes, I do, thank you. I think the resounding, every single email that I have gotten, that everyone here has gotten, because we're all CC'd on them from residents in the community, is their concern for the Board of Education budget. I have not gotten one email from a resident who has children or does not have children, has moved here from another town, or has been here for 40 years, that they are in support of not fully funding our Board of Education. And I hear a lot of comments about the fear mongering. We had other town employees coming up here and making comments yesterday. And to that end, I hope that we don't have to close a school. I hope that that is not the decision that is made in the event of, and I hope that, as Mr. Timniak had pointed out, if there is additional funding, whether it's federal or state money, that we figure out how to work together better, because this is not working, and that we are able to better fund our Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. And I'm keeping it right within two minutes. Thank you very much. Ms. Franceschi.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Just going off of Ms. Shay, just find a better way to fund the BOE. We don't know all the backhands of what's going on, and who makes all these decisions and whatnot. But the Board of Education, to me, is very highly important. I'm sure to all you who will or had kids that are already old enough. Again, we don't know where, where all the backhand stuff goes, and where these monies and stuff and grants come from, but we don't, we can't make a decision on what they do with their money. But it is important that they are our future, and we forwardly think about them, because they're the one who's going to make our Stratford a united of one. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, you have a couple of minutes?
I just wanted to say that when we think about taxpayers and mill rates, we should be thinking about which services we offer. And great schools should always be the aim, because great schools create so much opportunity for towns, not just for the parents, but for revenue, for businesses. It's a beautiful thing. And definitely, as Ms. Franceschi just spoke about, it ensures a quality future for our children. So I just want to say that on record, and thank, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a nurse, I'm not a radiologist, I'm not an actuary, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a financial professional, but I spend all day working with those individuals. Through 40 years of business consulting, I've been in many organizations and looked at so many types of tasks that are, that need to be done, whether you're running a fire department, police department, you're collecting taxes, et cetera. Through common sense, through education, through experience, I can walk in the shoes of those individuals, and I can advise them and get their consensus on opportunities to improve the efficiency and quality of the services that are provided by near any organization. We can plan for the future. If we couldn't plan for the future, why would we hire, or make, or do any kind of budgeting? So the ability to do is assumed in the fact that we are. We are doing a budget. We are planning for the future. And we can learn from others. We don't have to impose what others do, but it would be negligent not to always be cognizant of the best practices, and how to continue to introduce those efficiencies. And I do want to thank the town and the administrators for implementing many efficiencies. Now, go back to the tax assessors example, that through software, they're going to say, we will be more efficient, we're going to improve quality, and therefore residents will be happier. That could be offset by a reduction in salary, given that, let's, 70% of our transactions are automated, but we still have six individuals working in the office. Thank you guys for listening to the amendments. Didn't mean to be confrontational, absolutely wasn't being personal, and...
Mr. Poissons?
Based on everything we heard tonight from Mr. Timniak, with the extra money that is going to the Board of Ed from sources outside of this town, I have no comment. My vote will speak for itself.
Thank you, Mr. Poissons. Ms. Sutton?
I just want to, as a new counselor, just thank everybody, all the department heads, all the town staff that has really taken one-on-one attention, or given me one-on-one of their time, to help me understand this process, and help me go through everything, all departments, line by line. You know, it's been really eye-opening, to say the least, what I've learned just this far. I have, as a resident, a taxpayer, a single mom, and a PTA president, current, I have complete faith in our elected officials, including all seven members of the Board of Ed. I know in my heart that we can do great things together. We have exceptional teachers, exceptional staff and administrators in our schools, and I know that the threats, I don't appreciate whatsoever of being, people saying they're threatening to close schools, that came nowhere from anyone on this side of the table. That is not our authority, nor is it a super's. That belongs in the hands of the people that are elected to be the Board of Ed. So that, I hope everyone will understand. And I appreciate everybody's time, and their advocacy for the students here in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Mr. Connor, you have two minutes.
Through to Chair. My good friend, Ms. Shay, I'd like to point out something. You know, tonight, you said we showed up with, basically, you didn't have no input. And I will go back to Monday on the CDBG. After a committee met for a number of months, we get surprised, which I've never seen. This is my 11th year, I'm the senior guy, never seen that played. And then what I really found interesting is, you know, that's federal money. All four of you voted against giving, especially the South End money. That's what you did. Go back and look at it. Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You voted against the budget. Yet, don't shake your heads. You made the vote. You can make, you can say no, but you did the vote. So...
Mr. Con, oh, excuse me.
My point is...
Mr. Connor's before, everyone's getting the same courtesy.
Yeah, my, my point is, there is a problem in the world, in the country and stuff, but, you know, let's not make it all about us, what we did, because you guys pulled that stunt on Monday, and you did vote no for everybody. Your vote is a, is not for one thing. Go ahead, check the vote. You don't know, because you're new, and you're not paying attention.
Mr. O'Brien, you're next. You have two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, well, I'm the oldest one here. He's the oldest, seniority-wise. And I've lived here longer than anybody. I've always loved this town, and I still love it despite a lot of the negativity I hear out there. I wish Greg had the opportunity to analyze the administrative costs of the BOE, but we don't have that right. So that's on them. I could praise every department in this town, and Public Works is a great example. I keep saying over and over again, the culture there has changed from the way it was years ago, and they're all very proud of what they do, and they, they do their job very well. And Greg likes to mention other towns. Well, compare our roads to other towns, and they're pretty bad in Shellon and Trumbull, from what I've seen, and Milford. Check the light conditions in other towns, and we're in a lot better shape than they are. But to finish up with some positives, most important are diverse and caring citizens. We have so many great ones. And our nine museums that have now made us the tourist attraction, everybody thought the Shakespeare would make us, and of course, throw in Two Roads, they draw probably more than anybody. And I could go on and on about the positives, but it's a great town, and I'm glad I can do my part to make it better.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Councilwoman Dantrell, excuse me.
Through the chair. As someone who's chaired the ordinance budget workshops for this, it's my fifth time doing that, I just wanted to say thank you to those who participated in those discussions. And I think that a lot of the people who didn't, might have had a lot of their questions answered in advance of tonight. But I also wanted to point out that the budget is a fluid budget. It is, it is something that is, is not so, so static, that it can't be fluid, and, and things can change, and money moves around, and there's many, many variables to the budget that can happen as the year progresses. I just wanted to say, one of the main goals is to lower the mill rate, help it make more affordable for people to live in our town. No one wants the Board of Ed to fail, no one's going to let the Board of Ed fail. The Board of Ed is an important part of our town. I love the Board of Ed, as I do, I love the police department, I love the fire... love the Police Department. I love the Fire Department. I love our Public Works Department. So I'm proud that we are part of the committee who can lower the mill rate for the fifth time. So thank you.
So I'll just wrap it up for a couple of minutes. Thank you to everybody, councilors, for those of you working on your first one. Now you got one under your belt, you saw the fun in it. To all of our department heads that are here, as I do every year, thank you. We can't do this without you and your people. I appreciate everything you do. You make the town move, and it's, you know, one thing I'm going to take away after I'm long gone with all this, I'm going to realize, and I tell people all the time, how a small group of people keeps a town of fifty-five, fifty or fifty-five thousand moving seamlessly is no easy task. So I appreciate everything you all do. The other thing, you know, it was a good budget, we're keeping the flat, we're keeping the mill rate flat, I'm happy about that. You know, but to the Board of Ed point, this one was very disheartening, I'll be honest with you. I think this was the most disheartening one I've dealt with in the last five years. And it's not because of the true money of it, it's because of some of the rhetoric and the fear-mongering that people put out there. I don't believe in that. I don't believe in that. We come up here to do a job. We can disagree on a line item of plus or minus on something, that's fine. But the reality is, and you know, Ms. Dantrell, you hit the nail on the head, a budget is a living, breathing, working, organic document that grows and adapts throughout the year. This thing today is not going to be the same twelve months from now. We know that. Departments come in with surpluses, okay? So to send threatening emails, to scare kids, it's really wrong. And quite frankly, just from a math standpoint, you know, threatening to close a school for when you're around eight-hundred-thousand-dollar difference is not right, and a lot of people that I've talked to really didn't appreciate it. So the bottom line is this, I'm going to take my last thirty seconds is, for those of you, Mr. Timniak hit on it, here's the true facts on the Board of Ed numbers. The alliance came in at one-point-one million. The Title I money, thank Rosa Delora, came in at a hundred and forty-five thousand. These are all new numbers that the Board of Ed didn't factor into their numbers, okay? The healthcare savings came down, came in at six-point-one versus seven. That's a savings increase to the Board of Ed of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That number has drastically shook, excuse me, shrunk now, okay? And so everyone knows, too, yes, there's a few hundred-thousand-dollar gap there. The Board of Ed, and I want to thank a few of its members, Ms. Bedell, Mr. Henrich, Mr. Kennedy, have identified four other cost-saving measures that will allow, that will not close one school and not cut one staff, that amounts to about seven hundred and forty-two thousand. So the seven Board of Ed members have the vote on this. So I ask, as many emails as I got from frantic parents from a cryptic message that went out, ask those seven Board of Ed members to make these cuts that don't fire one person and don't close one school. I'll provide those to you. If anybody wants the exact line items in the budget, I'll provide that. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you for everybody working together. I'm looking forward to another good year with the town. And with that, we're going to call a roll-call vote on item 1.1.
Ms. Sheik? No. Ms. Franceschi?
No.
Ms. Rice?
No.
Mr. Khan? Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dantrell?
Yes.
Chairman Pia?
Chair votes yes.
It passes six-four.
Motion passes six-four. Next item on the agenda is going to go straight to a roll-call vote, as discussion was combined earlier.
Mr. Chairman, you're going to need to amend this item at two locations. One is...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Claire.
The estimated revenues as well as the mill rate because of the legislation signed by the governor Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Claire. So first, I need a motion to approve item 1.2. So moved. Mr. Poissons, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Dantrell. Discussion, I need an amendment, this is the state change to the car tax, as we talked about. I need a motion to amend for the adopted mill rate ordinance, for the, excuse me, let me restate that, for the mill rate for the car tax.
Someone needs to make a motion...
I need a motion to amend.
To amend the estimated revenues of the town of Stratford, other than by taxation for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, to fifty-nine million forty thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. And number two, adjusting the tax levy of the mill rate on the dollar of the grant list of taxable motor vehicle property of the town to thirty-two-point-four-six mills.
Would anyone like to take Mr. O'Brien?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Dantrell. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Does this need to be a roll-call, Margot? No, it does not. Motion to amend. So we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten-zero to amend. Thank you. Back to the original motion as amended. Do I have any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a roll-call vote. Ms. Paquette?
Ms. Sheik? Yes. Ms. Franceschi?
Yes.
Ms. Rice? Mr. Khan? Mr. Poissons?
Yes.
Sutton? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dantrell?
Yes.
Chairman Pia?
Chair votes yes.
Ten-zero.
Motion passes, excuse me. Motion passes ten-zero. Thank you. Last item on the agenda is adjournment. I'll entertain.
So moved.
Hold on. I'll sign, yes, that's right. Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, councilors, we need to sign a rate bill, so councilors, please do not leave. Ten councilors, please do not leave until you sign what Mr. Claire has.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Poissons, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes ten-zero. Thank you all.
I'm sorry, come eat pizza while I do that for him, because I forgot.